Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen, or Select Board as your preference would have it, of June 20, 2023. This is a hybrid meeting which necessitates a reading into the record of the following notice. This is to formally advise that as required by General Laws, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25, in pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021. As extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, June 20, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below, and that public access information is posted on the town's website. There's various ways to come in, by computer or phone. So having read that, we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We also have in attendance, by remote access, Selectmen. Peter, can you hear me okay? I don't know if he's on yet.
You're muted, Peter.
Well, just want to make sure he's connected because he's had problems with that recently.
He appears to be in.
We'll try him. We'll try him a little bit.
Text him and see.
Ah, here we go. Yes, I can hear everybody, and it just allowed me to unmute myself.
Okay, good. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, sir.
Beautiful. All right, thank you. Okay, we will start with the public announcements. My understanding is Jeff Colby has an announcement he would like to make.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. I want to make sure everyone out there in the public is aware of a great event coming up, a grand opening for the Sandy Pond Inclusive Playground and Splash Deck Project. That's going to be this Saturday, June 24, at 9:00 AM. The address is 482 Buck Island Road, and that's the Sandy Pond Recreation Area. We really appreciate everyone's attendance. I think the weather's going to warm up this weekend, and it'd be very appropriate to have a splash deck in which to enjoy. So we're getting that in just as the summer season kicks off, and we want to welcome everyone to that event. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Does anyone else have any announcements? Bob, anything?
No. Jeff said I could bring my bathing suit.
Okay.
24th, and I think I'm going to take one.
This is not, this is an announcement as opposed to public comment, okay? Because I will recognize you as a public comment, because that's when you usually come in. But any other announcements? No? Okay. We will start public comment, and we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Select Board, for all you do. Tom, Nick, and Alf from the very historic town of Yarmouth, all incorporated. As you know, this is the last day of spring, and our summer season officially kicks off tomorrow, so I'll let you know this will be the last time I show up at a spring Board of Select meeting, so thank you. Also wanted to let everybody know that the sand sculptures, the Chamber of Commerce, under our great work from our executive director, our sand sculptures are just about complete around town, officially kicking off our summer season and having our guests and our tourists go around, take a look at these beautiful art forms with all kinds of designs, of very unique ones that our artists do. A young couple, as you know, been coming here for many years, spending a whole month and doing these creative sculptures. And the people, the business owners and the residents, always come up to them, they talk to them, and it's just a great, great thing. I just wanted to let everybody know that they're almost complete, so if you feel free to spend some time, there's about 33 of them, you can go around and take a look. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Peter?
Nothing for me.
Vita Morris. A couple of weeks ago, I had a rather disturbing experience involving the town libraries. One morning on the radio program, there was an announcement being made every half hour or so that the Yarmouth Town Libraries were sponsoring a virtual program on how to, for the trans community. And this involved young people between the ages of 13 and 18. So right away, I'm thinking, oh, and pre-registration was required. So I thought to myself, well, now, how are they going to control, you know, about the age, especially the lower limits, so to speak? So the town libraries had a board meeting, I guess, on today, no, the next day, actually. And I went to that, and it turned out to be the subject matter of the meeting was totally different than what's had been announced. It was supposed to have been for the buildings, or possible building of the new library, and it turned out to be something else entirely. But the initial announcement of what was going, what it was going to be brought in a lot of people who had questions about this virtual program to be held two days later on a Saturday morning, I guess it was. And in any event, when I stood up to leave early from this meeting, the so-called juvenile librarian followed me out, and we already found the library director, Jane, out there trying to calm down somebody who was trying to get some information about this trans program. And so Jane, this juvenile librarian, I forget her last name, Ms. Mindy, took me into the children's library, and we sat down, and I expressed some concerns about this program and why it was being held, because the radio didn't announce any other community having any such program. We were hooking up with the towns north of Boston, about three of them or something like that, to do it. And so she kept saying, well, she, they wanted to be sure that there would be equity and all the different points of view in the town would be covered. And like, less than a week later, there was another one, LGBT whatever program. This was for adults, I guess, and what have you. And I didn't see anything, you know, equitable about the fact that I didn't see any programs, for instance, from a reading of his books by Kirk Cameron, the actor who's going around, and he has, he had been banned from across the country, I guess, from the libraries. But then there was such pushback that in some instances, he was able to get in and drew, you know, thousands of people. I mean, the libraries were overwhelmed. So I asked the librarian, I said, "Well, is there any movement afoot to invite Kirk Cameron to do his reading?" "Ah, yes, but he's not going to be here in person, but he'll be here virtually." I just don't remember the date, you know? It's very soon. But right away, I had an idea, something was off here. So I let it go, and then, two days later, when I called to ask her what the date was for this virtual reading by Kirk Cameron, she said, "Well, it's on such and such a date, but it's not a virtual reading by Kirk Cameron. I'll be doing the reading," you know? And I said, "Well, what happened?" And she said, "Well," as far as she could tell, it was the responsibility of Kirk Cameron to get ahold of the library and ask for permission or something to do that. That's not how she presented it to me originally. And to be perfectly honest, a woman that seems to have a rather passing acquaintance with truth, I find it very disturbing that she is a librarian for young people, especially smaller children. I don't know how the parents, you know, police, whether they leave their children there for the readings or whatever that goes on there, and, or they're there to observe what goes on, but I just found that this was a very disturbing experience for me.
Okay, thank you, Vita. Anyone else? All right. We'll go to the first item then, which is Phase, Phase 1 District Improvement Financing Committee Charge. We had some discussion in the past about how to formulate a vote that incorporated certain concerns that the Selectmen had voiced when they saw the first draft of a proposed vote, and I guess that's kind of morphed into a charge, a committee charge, if I understand, that hopefully addresses it. Do you want to, do you want to just give us a brief summary of this, Bob?
Yes, certainly. And then, obviously, I'd invite Bill, who is far more expert at the DIF process, to chime in. But if you recall, we originally had the creation of the DIF Committee as one of the action items under the wastewater financing plan and the recently approved DIF. And we struggled two meetings ago with what specificity should be included in the motion to create this committee. And we discussed it further last week, and it was suggested that rather than to try to do it through a motion, that we draft up a committee charge statement that is similar to the charges for many of the other committees that the town has put together that says who creates them, what the membership is, what their specific duties are, general purposes, who they report to. So we've worked to take all of the material, and we put it in the format of a specific charge that indicates that the DIF Committee reports to the Board of Selectmen on a quarterly basis, as more if needed. It has staff support in here. It has that they're created by the Board of Selectmen to make recommendations for Board's action, and the membership is in detail of who will be members, but they'll all be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So that basically gives us a charge for the DIF Committee.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Bill Scott, Assistant Town Administrator. There's a lot more detail behind this on both the role of the committee and also the financing structure in the DIF document. So the great thing about this is it breaks down those components into one page, refers to the approved document to make sure that we're covering everything, and also adds some important information like staff and reporting frequency.
Okay. When you say in that first sentence, "The Phase 1 DIF Committee shall be designated by the Board of Selectmen," and I don't mean to split hairs on this, but you mean appointed? Or are you using that word designated as an alternative to appointed for a specific reason?
Oh, that could say appointed.
Yeah, it could say appointed.
No, I'm just curious. I'm just wondering. Because designated, designated wouldn't necessarily mean like, it's probably implied, but it's not express. So appointed, okay.
You'll still appoint each member even though some of the members are staff and...
Yeah, my understanding was, weren't different boards going to be nominating people to the Board of Selectmen? Or am I wrong on that?
Yes, we have, the membership is the assessors or someone that they nominate, and the Assistant Town Administrator, one member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the Finance Committee, and one member of the Community and Economic Development Committee. They would all be nominations made to the Board of Selectmen, but the appointments would be made by the Selectmen.
So I'm just curious, not necessarily to mark up the charge, but just how this operates. So will the Assessor's Office generally be nominating a person? The Assistant Town Administrator generally would be nominating a person like that? And then those collective nominees would come before the Board?
Would come before the Board of Selectmen for approval.
Okay.
I was just curious, a member from REC wasn't contemplated?
No, it's not in the document. This is really about the, well, I mean, you could say they have financing issues. Really, this is about, as the assessor determines what the new growth is.
Okay.
This committee allocates it pursuant to the DIF document.
So it's a new, it's a new direction. It's not...
Right. It's very specific, and some people have confused it for getting a broader perspective on the project. It's not. It's DIF revenue as it relates to the project and not the project as it relates to the DIF. It's a, you know, so it's important to understand that all they're doing is the assessor determines what the growth is, they are putting it in the appropriate pocket, and right now, the way it's structured is 100% is going to the debt. So it's a pretty easy decision.
Okay. You mentioned bylaws. What kind of bylaws are envisioned?
Well, usually for a committee, you would establish bylaws on how you...
Conduction of meetings and stuff?
Yeah, conducting the meetings, things like that, special meetings.
Not general bylaws for the town, per se?
No. The DIF document itself establishes what the accounts are, and in more detail, the DIF Committee itself. So the, the, DIF is a very flexible, you know, financing approach, so you, sometimes these committees are determining that this is going to go into a cash-related project, and so that people are actually applying against the DIF. In this case, it's all going to go to debt, you know? So it's going to be an easy decision for them. If we are making a lot more money, we may do, you know, you know, different alternatives to hit different pots that are necessary.
First couple of years, you expect it's just going to be deficits?
It's just going to be all debt, yeah.
Okay.
Probably for the first five.
Dorcas, do you have any questions or suggested changes or anything of that nature?
No, actually, the ones I had seen, you've already pointed out, so.
Just the concept of staggering the appointments makes sense, right? So that they're not all coming up at the same time.
Yeah, that's not in the, in the document itself, so that's a good point.
You support that?
Well, I mean, they could all disappear at once or appear at once, so it's up to the Board if you want to stagger them so that you have sort of knowledge from the prior committee.
Like two, three-year appointments, two two-year appointments, one one-year appointment? That's usually how you set them up, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. But that's not in any of those other documents?
No, it's not in the DIF document itself, no.
So what would you have to do?
Well, that, this would be more of a bylaw in sort of operational thing. It doesn't have to be in the DIF document, so you don't need to...
So you could do it in the bylaws?
Yeah, you can do it in establishing the bylaw, or you can do it as you appoint them right here and say, "Here is the, the sequence of appointments."
Five members? What if we inserted after five members in staggered terms?
About appointed to staggered terms by the Board of Selectmen.
Say that again?
Appointed to staggered terms by the Board of Selectmen, just to make it extra clear.
Appointed to staggered terms. Okay. So we can put it right in the charge, and then we're done with it, right?
And Bill, just one other question was, and I'm not certain myself, but would planning be appropriate as a part of this?
No, we really want to get to the financial piece, so if, let's say, the engineers come in with something that needs to slightly change a project budget, then the DIF Committee might be involved to see how it relates to this. So it's very technical and specific.
Well, there's a point I want to add to, is I think it's critically important to separate this out from the wastewater project, okay? So it's not a part of the wastewater project. What we're dealing with here are property tax revenues, right? So these property tax revenues are all collected, and they go into a pot. Now, this DIF Committee is going to be responsible for apportioning that share of these property tax revenues that's necessary to support the wastewater project. And any additional amounts, right, can go directly into the town's tax levy to support all other services. So it's important that we have a firm understanding of the obligations of the wastewater, because the debt is high, and we have a level that we're estimating of this that's going to be apportioned to that debt. But in later years, as it begins to get paid down, it may very well be, and I think it has the right people on here, to know when to make that decision to the Selectmen that a certain portion of these DIF revenues can be returned to the general property tax levy, because that's the idea, is as the DIF grows and the debt is paid down, in the future, there will come a time where we don't have to be at 100. And so it's important to look at it through the lens of, you have somebody from Finance Committee, you have somebody from Board of Selectmen, you have somebody from Assessors, you have somebody from Town Administration, because there's going to be that decision, and that's going to be a sort of a big history for the town.
And I get all that, and this is probably just my misunderstanding, but at some point down the road, would they, I thought it wouldn't be necessarily going back into the general fund, but going into a kitty for infrastructure projects to help further development on 28, which is my question about...
There's three essential, simple, is three pots of money. You're either putting it into the sinking fund for debt, you're returning it to the levy, as Bob is saying, or you're putting it into special purpose funds that are related to the project. So the other key thing to this is this group determines if it's related to the project. So if people feel that, you know, "We want to use it for park cleanup," no, it's not related to the project, you know? Well, the parks are in the Phase 1, no. So they, you know, there's a level of integrity there that if you limit it to finance-related people, they'll stick to that topic. The other thing this does is 40-Q allows you to, anything you're paying back with the DIF is no longer considered debt. So it takes it off the debt rolls, and that's an important function because it lowers your amount of debt. So the more you put into your debt with this, the less debt you have in the project that goes on to the book. So, you know, I've seen these committees where there are policy decisions made in advance, like Bob was saying, that if we triple the amount of revenue we originally anticipated, then we plan on moving this amount of revenue to this account, or it will go to the levy, and you do that in advance, so you know what's going to happen as you move down, you know, through the process and the revenue. But the advantage is, everybody's talking to each other to make sure the funds are used within the context of the plan, and that's it.
That makes a lot of sense. Can I just break away just quickly? Peter, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any input on this so far? Any corrections or suggestions or anything like that?
Dan actually hit most, most of my points. How often is the committee going to meet?
What did he say? Did you hear him?
Can you repeat that?
How often is the committee going to meet?
If you report quarterly, at first, it might meet, you know, to set up the bylaws and do that probably twice a month, and then moving on to once a month, and then you might just meet before you do the quarterly report after that. So it's going to, Peter, it's going to ramp up based on establishing the process and how they establish, because in the background, what this DIF Committee could do is establish policy on how they handle new growth within the context of the state statutes and all those other things, so how they define that. The assessor has done a great job in doing that already. But in the beginning, you might want them to meet more frequently to set up all those protocols.
So let me go to Mark just for a second. Mark, just to bring you up to date on this Phase 1 DIF Committee charge.
Yes.
Do you have that document?
I'm looking for it. I saw it in my online packet, but I have yet to see it in my...
So so far, so far, what the changes have been by the Board is, under specific charges, it says the Phase 1 DIF Committee shall be, it said designated, and we're changing that word to appointed. And then down below where it says "membership," after the, it says, "There should be one DIF Committee consisting of five members," and after the word "members," we were going to insert appointed to staggered terms by the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
So those were the only two real changes made so far.
In the Select Board appointment, did we want to, that be a Select Board member or a designee, or do we want to keep it as a Select Board member?
I'd just as soon have somebody on the Board there. I mean, the Finance Committee is going to have somebody. I think the Board of Selectmen should have a representative.
Okay. I'm not making an issue. I'm just, I just want to clarify that.
We're also going to have the Town Administrator, who typically would be a designee of the Board.
Right.
He's already going to be a member of the Board.
I have one of...
Assistant Town Administrator, no, it's the Assistant, I'm sorry, Assistant Town Administrator.
Another question...
If you want to put designee in, and the Board's comfortable with that, I'd be fine with it.
I'm not, I'm not recommending it, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to get that on the table. The other question that I would have is, in the establishment of any of the bylaws, does the Select Board review and approve the proposed bylaws, or is that something that is left to the committee?
That's a good question. I mean, these will be, as was discussed earlier, these will be operational, how the committee conducts its business, more or less.
Election of officers, frequency of meetings, special meetings, all those kind of definitions.
So it's just the, the bylaws deal with the organization of the committee?
Correct, yeah.
And that's it? Is that clear in this charge? I think if we made that clear in the charge, I'm very comfortable with it.
Let me just see where, what line was the, okay. P O D C shall create...
It doesn't say that in here?
It's not in there, you're right.
No, but I think that's what we should say.
Because I have the same question.
Okay. That would be the only change that I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, is that in the reference of the bylaws.
Did you want to put the word organizational before the word bylaws?
Sure.
Should that do it?
I think that would do it.
So, hold on, we'll do that. Just to make sure that they're not anything other than that.
Right.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else? Peter, do you have anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mark?
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Nope.
Dorcas?
No.
Okay, so with those three changes, are you ready to do a vote on that?
Yeah.
With those three changes, which are again, under this word, under the first heading, specific charges, the word designated will be changed to appointed. In the following sentence, the word organizational will precede the word bylaws. And then at the bottom of the page, where it says, "Under membership," after the words "five members," we will insert the words, "appointed to staggered terms by the Board of Selectmen." So do I have a motion with those changes to approve this charge?
Motion to approve with the amendments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So we'll do a roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Ian?
Aye.
Dorcas?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So those are unanimously approved with those three amendments. So, those are unanimously approved with those three amendments.
Mr. Chairman, just as a note, next week is Matta Key's, and we'll try to do something similar to this for their charge, so we have a similar format next meeting.
Okay. Perfect, 2023-5-0. All right. That was good. Next item, everybody's favorite. Nip bottles.
Did you bring some, Mike?
I don't think we need a lot of background on this. Everybody knows that nip bottles are omnipresent, not just in the Cape, but everywhere. They're discarded, they're annoying, people are fed up with seeing them around. And I guess the question is, what if anything does the town want to do about that? That's what brings us here tonight. My understanding from reading the literature in the packet, and anybody can feel free to correct me on this, is that should the town decide to take some action on this issue, there's really two ways to do it. One is by a vote of the Board of Selectmen, and the other is by a town meeting article.
Vote to change the licensing requirement, you mean?
Well, what they, the way it would be done is, when you renewed the license, you would have a restriction on it, that they couldn't serve alcoholic beverages in containers less than, I think it's 100 milliliters. Am I right on that?
Right, right. And 100 milliliters is a little bit bigger than a nip, but smaller than a half pint bottle, so that's what the kind of general standard is. But it's been accomplished in the Commonwealth both ways. It's been challenged by the ABCC, and it's been approved for the regulation of the licenses. And the Attorney General's Office has approved the article. And I just put up, what, an example of an article would be the, just briefly, the Board of Selectmen had asked that I go back and research what the state of the art, what towns are doing, and there's, you know, a number of towns. It's, you know, Nantucket, Mashpee, Falmouth, Chelsea, I think, was the one who started. Newton has done it in Boston. And it's been one of the two methods. And the board also asked that I reach out to the business community, and I have through the chamber to, you know, talk with them about, you know, the various litter control things and what potential impacts of a ban on nips would be. And so, I wanted to thank very much the chamber, has looked into it, talked to some of their members, and they're here this evening to, you know, give the board some information as well.
Yeah, I mean, we've always, when it's come to anything that can affect a segment of the community, invited those affected people or stakeholders, as I like to call them, in to give their input. Just as an aside, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I've mentioned before that a great solution to this would be if the state put a sizable deposit, and I don't mean a nickel, or not even a dime, but if they would put like a quarter deposit on these things, you wouldn't see them. But I don't know if you're going to get the state to, and it would be statewide. So, let's say, for example, Yarmouth, and again, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but suppose Yarmouth passes a bylaw which says you can't sell nips here in Yarmouth. You can buy them in Barnstable, you can buy them in Dennis. So, does that mean our streets are going to be clean? Or does it mean that the nips we're going to find on people's properties purchased somewhere else? How many towns, I think, does Falmouth, Falmouth and Mashpee?
Falmouth, Mashpee, Nantucket.
Nantucket?
I think those are the three, and the Cape and the Islands.
Okay.
And then, the other ones we're aware of, I know a number of towns have looked into it, but we know Chelsea, I think, started it off. Newton has it, and Boston has done it, not citywide, but in different sections.
So, we always start with a process, right, Mark?
Right.
And I guess that probably should be the beginning of the discussion, is what kind of a process should we have? And who should we notify, how should we notify them? You know, businesses, one of the problems right now is, his businesses are out straight because of the season, and I don't know if you'd get the best response in the summer months from the stakeholders. You might, you might want to wait until after the peak of the season, I don't know. But, Mark, what do you think about the process?
And I'm glad the way we're breaking this up like this, so that we're talking process, and then there's the substance side of it, because I don't, I think we need to create a process that allows us to have the access to lots of information, so that should we decide to go forward and recommend something or do something, that we have plenty of information in our, at our disposal. I like the idea of giving early notice and having a process that's well laid out, so people know that, they know what our parameters are, what we're going to do, and the time process. For example, if we were to agree initially to consider a town meeting article, if that was a course of action, then what we should do is, is have a timeframe on when we're going to get information, when we're going to have plenty of opportunity for various boards and groups and organizations to weigh in. And then, we make a decision on whether to move forward based on that. So, for example, a town meeting article, there's typically a deadline, usually in submitting an article sometime, you know, in, let's say, February, the February-March timeframe, right? So, what we do is, we could start there and work backwards. So, that would be the date that we have to make a decision, do we introduce an article or not? And then, let's use the time leading up to that to have hearings and invite the business community in. And we can invite others that have had experience with this. So, we may want to pick a couple of Select Board dates to do, let's say, hearings. Maybe we want to have a couple of hearings on this article well in advance. There's nothing preventing us from doing that. And we can invite people who think it's a good idea to come in on both nights, and people who think it's a good idea, people who think it's a bad idea. We, as a board, I would very much welcome the opportunity to give maybe a portion of a meeting to those that have done it. What's great about hybrid meetings is that we can invite someone from Nantucket to join us at a meeting, and they can be with us on TV, you know, so that we can hear what they have to say. I'm very much interested in hearing what the Falmouth Solid Waste Advisory Committee recommended to their town. I've heard from the chairman of the committee. It's been on other sort of regional waste issues, but then he just sort of threw that into the conversation. And they've got, like Yarmouth, they have a terrific committee focused on recycling, and they're very, very talented, very, very smart, people with lots of experience in it. And they've done it, and it sounded like they were very well-prepared before they went at the town meeting with their proposals. So, my hope is, is that, you know, we can benefit from hearing what the others have to say. So, to me, process is really important, it's everything. And I think we ought to give, in considering this, the business community an opportunity to speak as loudly and clearly with what they see, or what they, maybe if there are alternative ideas, you know, allow that to be introduced into the discussion. It may very well be that this might serve as a notice, and that maybe if there are other ideas, my recommendation would be people start, you know, implementing them and start working on them. Make, you know, allow this to become null and void as not necessary, because other measures are being taken. So, by making a commitment to a process that's laid out over several months, gives people ample time to show us that if a town meeting article doesn't make any sense, that gives them plenty of time, gives them some months to start doing something and showcasing that indeed there are other measures that might work. I know in Falmouth, for example, there are a number of people who are basically saying that they have yet to see a liquor store close after the ban, so...
No, but I think one of the things that benefits Falmouth though is Mashpee did it as well.
Yes.
I think we'd be in a little bit different situation if we were the only town and our two neighboring towns didn't do it.
Yeah, I think those are all...
It'd be greater access. You wouldn't have to go out of your way that far, really, to go to Dennis from here or...
I think those are, those are issues to consider in the process. But my suggestion is, is process is important. If we're going to go, I would prefer that we go the town meeting route. Make sure that we have a deadline in place well ahead of time, so that we announce to people that we're going to take up a draft article, this is the draft article. We'll make a decision on a particular date, sometime in March, let's say, or the end of February. And then, let's give people plenty of time, let's create a process leading up to that date that enables all the right folks to speak and weigh in, offer us their opinions, and we can hear from others that have had some experience with it. So, that, those are my thoughts.
Those are all good comments. Dan?
No, I agree. Mark mentioned many of the concerns that I had. We know it's an issue, and as I was talking to somebody in the audience earlier, education should be a part of this as well. But finding out, you know, what's being done currently, I think, is important in having this discussion with the chamber, but also with the actual business owners. And this is not the right time for that, but if we build that discussion back so that they can come in in early January, February, March timeframe to be able to talk to us a little bit about other opportunities, I really do want to be sensitive to the businesses' concerns and fears when it comes to this. But it's an issue that's being taken up everywhere, so I think we have to look at it. You mentioned Falmouth's RASWA committee. I'd like to see where our RASWA committee is on this and what efforts they've taken. Have they had conversations with other RASWA committees? I'd love to have a talk with Dennis and Barnstable, see if we can't get some consensus so that we're not acting alone. But this at least is putting in place a process to have the discussion with an ultimate decision, kind of forcing the conversation. I don't know about the deposit, I think it's a great idea, but, you know, having Chris come in, or state reps come in and talk, to see if that's even feasible is worth it.
I'm not sure if it is or isn't, but I do think it would work, because there's a serious amount of money laying there on the ground and...
You know, and that extra money is just going to be passed on to the consumer. I don't know what that does to the volume of sales, but maybe that's...
Well, if they're going to just throw it away, what's going to happen is, it's going to cost the person that's throwing it away.
Maybe it's not our concern, right.
And it's going to benefit the person that's cleaning it up. So, that's why it makes sense to me.
We're talking for the best option here, and we won't get that until we talk to everybody.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's a viable option, but I mean, in theory, it makes a lot of sense to me. But you raise a good point. Maybe we can talk to Chris about that and see what, if anything, can be done in the state level. The other benefit to a statewide solution is, it's everywhere. I mean, you'd have every town and every city doing the same thing. So, okay, thanks, Dan. Dorcas, your comments?
Well, actually, a lot of, again, a lot of what I would have said has been said. The important thing, I think, is that education, and putting together a process like this, I think, makes a lot of sense. Giving everyone an opportunity to be able to come in and speak, from all sides, whether it's from the business side, whether it's from the environmentalists. But we've learned so much from our process with the wastewater that I think going forward, that really should be our prime example of how to do things in the future, and certainly on this as well. And by putting it into a March timeframe, we're taking some of the pressure off the businesses while they're in their peak season, that they're not going to have to come forward to put together plans, that they can discuss that with us in the off-season. So, I'm all for that idea. And definitely town meeting, I feel.
Okay, Peter?
Yes, process is important, and giving everybody the right to speak on it. And it shouldn't sound like we've, sound like the board or individuals on the board have already made up their mind, because we haven't, we haven't heard, we haven't heard everything yet. I know that, I think that, I think that the nips bottles, and actually, the single-use 100-milliliter bottles of all sizes should be banned, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, it's a single-use, and I just said, we haven't made up our mind. I had made up my mind, because it doesn't work in trash recycling, it doesn't get picked up in Marlboro. The physical item is too small, so it just gets wasted. And also, it's a drunk-driving issue. I have seen people go into a liquor store, buy a big bottle of Coke, a couple of nips, put it into, put it into the Coke bottle, so therefore, I'm not drinking, but I am driving, and I've consumed alcohol. So, I think it's a problem that needs to be discussed with everybody, and if there are other solutions besides a full ban. And what's been suggested here is a deposit. I think a 25-cent deposit would definitely clear up the problem of the trash on the street. My son, this afternoon, on Pine Street in the great city of Yarmouth Port, picked up 34 bottles within 100 yards of the railroad tracks crossing Pine Street. So, I mean, it is a major, major problem, both for drinking, litter, and just unsightlyness in the town. So, I think, I think the solution is for everybody to hear everybody's thoughts, get their ideas, any solutions that could happen. And I don't think it should be a Selectmen's decision, I think it should be a town decision, which leads us to a bylaw at town meeting.
Okay, thank you, Peter. And that's another good point, is that, you know, a consensus that the approach, if we do decide to do something, would be a town meeting approach as opposed to a licensing approach as placing a prohibition on the licenses. I think Peter's got a point, too, on the OUIs. I mean, I would just wonder how many people buy nips, take them home in the condition, same condition as they purchased them, put them on the counter, and after dinner, mix them with, you know, I think people buy them for the fly, to tell you the truth. And years ago, before I had the misfortune of becoming a lawyer, I've worked in liquor stores, several of them. And there's no question in my mind that, you know, the people that were buying these, and a lot of them were young people, too. They were gone as fast as they left the parking lot, the nips. I mean, some of them, you could even see them, you know, as they went down the road. That's a, that's a big problem. It is an OUI concern as well, there's no question about that.
It'd be nice to see if the police have any data on that. I haven't heard any, but...
Well, that's, the reason they don't have any doubt is, the stuff's not in the car. I mean, I've had OUI cases where they stopped somebody, and it's right in the police report that, and I'm not going to pick out a particular beer brand, but they had two six-packs of ABC beer in the car. I had one guy, it was a chronic alcoholic, they found a gallon wine bottle with about three inches left in it. But I think that's one of the reasons nips are brought, is so that the bottles can be quickly disposed of. If the person stopped, the police won't find that kind of evidence, which is, which is admissible. The police can say what they found in the automobile, if they make a valid stop, so... That's part and parcel of it, I think. So, does the board feel, is there a consensus that if the board did want to address this problem, that it would be by way of a town meeting article?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, we're pretty much on the same page with that.
Yes.
Because even though, even though we could do that, I mean, as far as I read... Because even though, even though we could do that, I mean, as far as I read this literature, there was, a board did that, I forget if it was in Boston or wherever, was it Chelsea? And then somebody appealed to the ABCC, and if I read, if I read the literature correctly, the ABCC ultimately decided they didn't have jurisdiction, meaning the licensing, the local licensing board's decision stood, because it was a local requirement. So, I think the board, again, just from a cursory reading of the materials in the packet, I think the board does have the authority to impose a condition on the licenses. But I would agree, that's not the preferred route. We should, if we do do something, it should be a community response.
Yeah, we have Mary here. Is there any chance?
Yeah, you wanna be heard on this? Any comments or?
Would you mind if Jill and I came up for five minutes?
Come right up front, both of you. We'd love to hear from you, Mary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mary Vilbon, Executive Director of the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce.
Jill Talladay, Care for the Cape and Islands.
Great. So, number one, thank you all very much. We appreciate the conversation, basically, about this very important issue that I think all of the business community and residents face in pretty much every town, right? I mean, that was just discussed. We wanted to share with you, I'm not sure if you were able to provide the information.
Yes.
Okay, great. So, we just wanted to share a little bit about what we've been doing from the chamber's standpoint, along with the town of Yarmouth, also Care for Cape and the Islands, and I hope I can say from the town's recycling committee, and a little bit about our approach of what we've done. So, for four years, I personally sat on the town recycling committee. For five years, I also sat on the board for the Care for Cape and the Islands. And it was very important to us for our approach of addressing this as an anti-litter campaign. And that was actually inspired out of a conversation that I had with the select board late last summer, where this exact topic came up of litter from the NIP bottles. We saw it on the cleanup day, but basically, our residents were picking up NIP bottles on a daily basis. So, from that meeting, I went back to one of our committees, which is the Yarmouth Community Partnership, which is some of our larger stakeholders in our community, got their input, went back to our marketing committee, talked to Jill, knowing that the town had already adopted some of the Take Care Initiative signs in Yarmouth, and that was in the packet. Jill has a few of the examples here that she's brought and are in your packet. So, from a branding standpoint, what we did is created an anti-litter campaign where we went to the Community and Economic Development Office under our marketing contract and asked if we could purchase 25,000 stickers that would be given to any of the businesses that have takeout containers, that have packaging, that have NIP bottles. And we gave those to those businesses in Yarmouth. So, as of today, 25,000 of those stickers are in our local businesses. We started it last fall. We went back out for Memorial Day weekend and also for this weekend. And it was great to see that Jill went into one of our local establishments, 908 Bistro, and she saw that one of the stickers was on takeout packaging that a customer was taking out. My husband went into a local package store over Memorial Day weekend, and there were people buying NIP, the sleeves, and the stickers were on them. The businesses were more than happy to be able to be part of this campaign, because they wanna see a solution, too. So, I appreciate that you're taking the time to hear from them, because maybe they do have a solution that we're not even thinking of, or something that they want to be part of, so that we don't have to impose something like a ban on a NIP bottle. But we certainly understand your concern in doing that. But there is a substantial financial impact on those businesses by doing that, and we understand that as well.
So, we, I mean, we don't have to be convinced that there's a financial consequence for this. And it's really not a response by the board more than the public. We've been hearing about NIP problems for a very, very long time. And, you know, people, even some, not, not liquor establishments necessarily, but even some of the businesses on 28 are complaining about NIP bottles being cast on their motel lawns and things like that.
Absolutely.
So, it's really a community concern as opposed to a concern of the board. And not, not that the board's not concerned as well, but I think it's more broad-based than just this board of selectmen, far greatly.
And we appreciate that. We just wanted you to know that from your comments last summer, we walked away and tried to take an initiative to, you know, implement the anti-litter campaign. And like I said, the business community is very supportive of it, and in fact, we were just about to purchase another 25,000 stickers to push this through the summer. Again, to Mr. Horgan's comments, it's education to the consumer. We want to keep Yarmouth clean. We want, we're in the same position as our residents, that we don't wanna see the NIP bottles on the side of the road. We don't wanna see the napkins and the containers from the restaurants blowing in the wind down the street, right? There, that's all the things we all see every day.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Mark.
Do you know of any communities that have been able to address this issue through an education campaign? Are there other communities that have eliminated or significantly reduced the NIP bottle litter problem without having to resort to some ban?
So, it's much different than a town, but the state of Connecticut actually did an entire anti-NIP campaign. They actually came up with a slogan. They had containers where NIP bottles would be dispensed, like, be able to be disposed of. They, as far as I know, and I think I mentioned this to you last time I was before you, that we were doing a lot of research into that particular initiative that the state did. But again, it was a statewide initiative.
I understand. I think what we're looking for are any examples of success.
Yep.
Regardless of what they're about. But if there are other communities that have tried, tried it and tried something else, and they've been successful, I think, any and all examples, I think, are up, up for discussion. So, if there are other volunteer efforts that have worked, that's terrific. Make, share that information with us as well. I'm just not aware of any.
I think there's gonna have to be some kind of a solution, because, and again, this is just my gut instinct, but I would bet you, like, today, if an article like this went to town meeting, it would probably pass.
Yeah.
I think people are that fed up, I really do.
Yeah, and I, and I would say, Mr. Chairman, just to add to that point, I would not be surprised if we didn't take some kind of process, create a process. It wouldn't surprise me if there'd be a petitioned article. I mean.
That could happen, too.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, we've had petitioned articles before, as we all know, and you've seen them on the, in fact, I'm surprised that the, the various groups that are out there campaigning on the single-use plastic bottles haven't been all over this, because, you know, a lot, a lot of the folks that have, share the concerns that they have about the single-use plastics are all over this. So, I think it's a matter of time, unless the legislature does something, or if, unless there's something done at a statewide basis, I think it's just a matter of time before individual towns keep doing, you know, what they're doing. That's just my observation.
Dorcas, anything further? Dan?
No. No, just bottom line, it's hard to legislate behavior. And there's, there's about 20 different things that I'd like to legislate.
Go to Florida, Mr..
I do not wanna go to Florida. But, you know, a significant component of this needs to be education, and, you know, it would be great to partner with the schools on this, because sadly, I mean, I'm seeing a lot of these bottles around the schools. When I go clean the schools on your cleanup day, I need a whole bag to get those. So, there's an issue there as well. So, you know, if we come at it in a lot of different directions, maybe we can have an impact, without having the draconian solution of just banning them outright. But we need more information and hearings like this, and I'd love to hear from the actual stakeholders. You know, what does it mean if you take those away? What's the bottom line gonna look like? But, you know, what's the alternative? So, this is a great first step.
Peter, do you have anything further?
No, I, I believe the board has, has covered it nicely, and if we can get the stakeholders in, you know, probably starting in September or early October, that, that would be great. You know, the summertime's not, not the time to, to push this, because the liquor store owners are up to their eyeballs, hopefully making some good money this summer.
Mark, anything?
No, I think what we're doing is something that a lot of government organizations do, and that is, is in the federal government, they call it a notice, an advance notice of a proposed rulemaking. We see them all the time. The idea is to get something out there early, give people an early warning. So, that's, that's, that's kind of the mode that we're in. And then oftentimes, what happens is the final product, the final rule, is based on the input and the feedback that has been derived at during, during a process. What I think, what I, what I really enjoy is when the board sets, we've done this before with other issues. I remember when we first had to deal with the issues at Gray's Beach. What, we had plenty of forums inviting people to come in, they identified all the things that they wanted, we, we advertised the meeting on social media. So, it was an advance warning, saying, hey, we're having a meeting, this is the issue, come on in and give us your, your concerns, your ideas. We had a, you know, full-size room, or, and, or, and online. And we benefited enormously from hearing people early on. So, I like the idea of putting this issue on the table, getting plenty of advance notice. We could use our social media to drive people weeks in advance to, you know, meetings that are coming up, a select board. We, and we don't have to necessarily call them public hearings, we can call them workshops, we can call them public forums. Speak out, tell us what you think. And we can call them whatever we want. They don't necessarily have to be formal, but we can set aside some nights where we can invite certain folks in and let us know what you think. And, and again, people, we can use the process to educate folks. I think that's the kind of process that I think fits in nicely in this community, is giving people advance warning, advance notice, and let's use our social media and communication tools. Hopefully, as we get into this, we'll have a communications director, and this can be one of their projects that they can work on, so we can get notices out, flyers out, saying, hey, on such and such a night next month, it's gonna be NIP bottle night, you know? Come with your ideas and your suggestions and comment on these specific proposals. And we can just open up the mic and let people have at it. And like I said, we've been doing that lately, and I think it's a very, people respond in a very positive way to all of that. So, I'm with you, Mr. Chairman. Process is everything here in this conversation, giving an opportunity for everybody to be heard. So, let's get it out there that we're gonna take this up and do something on it. We're gonna do something on it, figure out a date, and then, you know, and then figure out the steps ahead of time, so. And I would recommend that what we, what we need to do tonight is just, I think, showcase to the, at least maybe vote for the administration to sort of come up with a, a plan, sort of with, you know, an endpoint on an article and maybe a series of forums. And then we just sort of put that out there, that this is the date to make the decision, this is the draft proposal, and some tentative dates for forums and meetings, and just get it out there. What do you think?
Works.
Are you making that motion?
Yes, so moved.
Wait a second.
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 We'll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dan? Dorcas?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Okay, so, Mary and Jill, thank you for coming in, and obviously, we're gonna, I'm sure, be in touch with you in the future about this issue, and you're gonna hopefully get the word out to the, to the businesses most likely to be affected, and, and make sure that they can get before us and voice their concerns and bring forth their ideas and their recommendations as to alternative solutions to a ban on the sale of NIPS.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
We appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is a discussion to change the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. So, some towns have made changes. Some towns call their boards Boards of Selectmen, some call them Select Boards. I know even among our current members and past members, they've used those terms interchangeably. Who wants to start off this discussion? Anybody?
I was just curious. When we talked earlier on about this issue, there was some sense that there would be preparation that needed to be made on the towns in, in terms of whether it's bylaws or charter or, I, I don't know. Is there things that have to be done from the town's side for us to be able to smoothly make this type of decision?
Yes, and in fact, that was the question that was posed to me to work with Town Council to determine what the path forward, if the board decided that it would seek to make that change. And Town Council has indicated that it's, from the local standpoint, primarily a legislative issue that starts with two key votes. And he's drafted actual town meeting articles that I have here, and if you don't have it handy, I brought a couple extras. Pass one of these down, Mark, just to find it quick. So, and he's, he's attacked it by separating out the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws. So, both legislative changes, there's a different votes required for, there's reference in the zoning and the general bylaws. And once those changes were made, then we would simply change all, you know, reference in the, in the documents to, instead of being Board of Selectmen, it would be Select Board. And so, the form of the change is reflected in the two-town meeting articles that were drafted by Town Council.
I'm gonna just throw out a few ideas to stimulate some discussion. One question is, what are we trying to accomplish, first of all? And secondly, is this gonna cause voter confusion? And I'm gonna give you an example on that in a moment. And third, what about how's this gonna affect candidates who've run in the past that have, that have signs out there that says so-and-so's running for selectman, then they go to the ballot, and it says Select Board? Are voters gonna be able to say, well, it's one and the same thing? The concern I had is this, in the last, the last election in Dennis, and I hope I got it straight, but Jeff Terrio and Wayne Bergeron were running against each other, and I was driving through Dennis, and I was kind of impressed with the fact of these very strategic locations where Mr. Terrio had his signs. And then on the other side of the street, I couldn't quite read the sign that well, so I kind of slowed down, and it said Select Board. And I think that was Wayne. I think he was running for Select Board, and Jeff was running for Selectman. And they, it was kind of confusing, confusing, and I, I was just wondering if, if some voters thought they were different offices. Because people do have a tendency to be creatures of habit. You call something, I am convinced that, I mean, I've lived in this town forever, and everybody's called, you know, they, they've deferred to people and say, select person McGurran, or select woman Dorcas, you know, among board members. But when somebody says, what do you do? What's your position in town government?" You say, "Oh, I'm a selectman." I think they get that. They understand that's kind of traditional. They know what it means. And then if you say, "Well, what do you do? I'm a member of the Board of Select..." The select... See, I caught myself. "I'm a member of the Select Board." Not so sure. They understand that's synonymous, you know? That's so... So those are just some... I don't have strong feelings, honestly, either way. But, you know, I think some of the focal questions are, what are we trying to accomplish? Is it tokenism or is there anything really substantive here? Are people going to understand that a selectman and a select board member are the same thing? Can it cause voter confusion? Is it going to put an additional burden on candidates who've already run that have signs that say "Selectman"? And then maybe the ballot's going to say something different? Is that going to create voter confusion? I just think these are some of the items for discussion. But I have not, by any means, come up with any kind of a hard conclusion or even a position. Anybody?
I'm happy to... One of the reasons why I think it's a good idea to put it on the warrant is because I've been approached by many people who have said, "Would you do it?" So I'm responding to numerous constituent requests. It's pretty basic. It's pretty simple. I would agree that there may be some confusion. But I think this is a trend that we're seeing in taking over in most municipalities. I don't know what the count is, but it's clearly moving in that direction. And so I don't have any objection to putting this question before, you know, before town meeting and letting town meeting ultimately make the decision on it. So that's where I'm coming from. So I've had a lot of requests. And so that's one of the reasons why I'm supporting getting this in question in front of town meeting. And it's really ultimately town meeting's decision.
Of course. Dan, your thoughts?
I agree. I do think the time has come to level the playing field here. Yes, it's been selectmen from the beginning of time here in Yarmouth. But, you know, things change and sensitivities change. And I think it's okay to recognize those. And I too have heard from several people in the community who feel that this is demeaning and something that should have been addressed long ago. And I don't disagree with that. I think with your idea with the stickers, the political signs, I think there are stickers that easily can go over "Selectman" to "Select Board" if you don't want to go out and buy all new signs. Is there confusion, much like everything else we're talking about? I think just a little bit of conversation upfront. We have those meetings, pre-town meetings, where we can get this kind of information out and just talk to people about why we're thinking about doing this. I love the fact that we're letting town meeting make the decision. I think we have a very informed town meeting. And so I think this is perfect for that kind of a venue to have this discussion. But I just think that, you know, we've moved into a time where we're looking at the seal because we recognize that it has flaws. And we are looking at other things in town. And this is just one of those things. It's an artifact from the past that really finally should just be addressed and give the equity that's due to all members of this board, you know? Frankly, I think we have to make better efforts at inviting women into the process. And I think, you know, this is a very basic step to do that, to make people aware that we are very welcoming of women on this board and their leadership capacity and skills. So I don't, I agree that it'll be an interesting discussion. We'll have to educate a few people. But I just think, like so many things, that as we move forward as a town, we're recognizing that some things aren't just okay anymore and that we should make small adjustments to recognize larger injustices. And, you know, I can say that easily as a man. I'm looking forward to hearing Darkus's opinions on this. But I have heard from other past women who've been Select Board members and have heard from people in the community. And there's just a degree of resentment and a degree of disappointment and frustration that we haven't done this yet. And I think it's time. So I'd like to see us go forward.
Thank you. Darkus?
Okay. Well, I too have heard an awful lot from the community, probably more than all of you put together on this particular subject. And there is a pretty large ground swell, I think, out there of people that would like to see it changed. What intrigues me is the number of younger people, students, who have come up to me and talked to me about it, that they're seeing this as more, selectmen as being more of an archaic, denoting us as selectmen as opposed to Board, Select Board. And I like seeing that. I like seeing that it's not only coming from the girls at school, it's coming from the boys at school as well. It's something that they're starting to look at. Certainly, from my perspective, Select Board would be more equitable. But I leave it up to the townspeople as to what they would want to do. I think put it on the article, on the town warrant, and see what people feel about it and go with that.
Okay. So we've heard from Select Board member Darkus McGurran. Let's go to Peter Q. Smith.
It's been "Selectmen since Jonathan Edwards and Sinners in the Hands of an Angry God." I think it's time to change. We want to get more diversity on the board, which means more women. And I too have heard from, not many, but a few of my fellow town members that say it should change. Will it cause some confusion? Yes, I think it will cause some confusion. But it'll take a couple of elections to get everybody settled in. And in terms of having to buy new signs, you know, we are highly paid as select members. So that should not be an issue.
$3,000 before taxes. That's why I ran.
But again, I do think this is something that town meeting should have their two cents to put in. And, but, you know, if this were, if we were making a vote tonight, I would vote to change it immediately. I think it's time. And I think it's not going to do any harm. And it's going to make the town and the make the boards be more inclusive.
Thank you, Peter. Anybody have anything further on this? No?
No, I just think we should vote tonight to put this proposed article or these proposed articles on the next town meeting warrant.
The fall.
If that's a motion, I'd be more than glad to make a second.
Well, we may not, I mean, I would say the next town meeting. If it is the fall, then I would put it on that warrant. My preference would be to, it should be on the annual.
Why don't we just do, put it on the annual?
The next annual?
Yeah.
Then I'll make that as the motion then.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to put it on the next annual. Peter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Darkus?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So that vote to put it on the next annual passes five. Favors or against?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to address that amount that selectmen are being paid if you want to add another article.
What are you looking for?
I plan on stepping off, so I'd be a perfect person to make that.
No, honestly, I agree with you. I mean, Jim Quirk years ago said that he thought that the stipend that selectmen got should be more so that especially younger people that are giving up other opportunities would be more apt to run for public office. That a lot of them just couldn't afford to do it.
Maybe a future agenda item. Just, I know some other towns have higher stipends.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see what those are. I would.
Yeah, I think if...
Maybe we could peel off some of the town administrator's salary and...
We'll ask the DIF committee.
Actually, bad timing with the evaluation and incentives coming up next meeting, right?
No, I...
No, all kidding aside, I think you have a valid, I think you have a valid point.
I was on the board in the early 2000s and it was $3,000 then. Do we know anything else that hasn't gone up in 20 years?
Do you know it was cut once from 3,000? Yeah. My late friend Jerry Sullivan, there was a budget crunch years ago. So he, you remember that? So he comes in, you know, he's going to provide leadership for the town with everybody taking cuts. And he moves to Board of Selectmen who are making three grand, cut their salary by 10%. So went down to like 2,700 for a number of years. Honestly, it finally got back up to the grand figure that it is today. But that's funny. Okay. So we are now at a discussion and possible vote on wastewater land use control regulations.
We've got John with a, maybe John from the Advisory Committee?
John Deliso?
Not there?
Yeah, I'm not sure. It just says John and Paul. We might want to elevate those folks up. So I think they vary, well, maybe...
John's up there now. Paul's up there now.
Do you want to check to make sure we know who they are?
I'd like to speak to John. John, are you, John from the Rack Committee?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you very much for coming. And Paul? Can you identify yourself, Paul?
Does Paul have himself on mute?
He does.
He's muted.
Paul, can you unmute yourself, please?
Well, he may, yeah, he's probably not there.
Well, we do have the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, so I'm very thankful for their leadership here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I could make a couple of comments to start off.
Thank you, Jeff. I was just about to recognize you as making a couple notes. Can you get us started, please?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Colby, again, the Public Works Director. I'm joined by David Young from CDM Smith. And of course, John Deliso from the Water Resource Advisory Committee is on the line as well. This land use controls is one of those remaining components for our state revolving fund application that's still needed. So we'd really like to get a vote of support from the board as soon as possible. We've submitted the bulk of the requirements of that. Again, the state revolving fund is those low-interest loans for our wastewater program. There's also a debt forgiveness component of that as well I should probably throw out there. These land use controls are a very high-level flow apportionment. It does need state approval. And so that's another reason to get the Board of Selectmen support as soon as possible because they want to see the certified vote of your board before they'll sign off on their component of that. There will be details on land use controls. When you think about land use controls, you think, well, what's the details? Who's going to get flow? When the flow is going to happen, things like that. Those details would be in the next section of the sewer regulations after this very high-level, you know, flow apportionment by watershed. So that is something that's still coming. You will still see that. We are targeting this fall to have a draft before you of the overall sewer regulations. But this is a portion that we need to get in earlier just because of the state revolving fund requirements. With that said, the Water Resource Advisory Committee last week did recommend approval, knowing this was coming before your board here very quickly. And Mr. Deliso probably could speak to that if you'd like him to comment further. With that said, I'd like to ask David Young to go in a little more depth on the document you have before you and kind of the development and purpose of that.
Thank you, Jeff. It's good to see the sewer commissioners, who I believe is a gender neutral term, to talk about this...
Long range and what?
This high-level means for...
How would that be gender-specific? Would it be like sewer man?
Sewer woman. Sewer person.
As Jeff indicated, this is one of the missing components of your state revolving fund application, which went in two weeks ago. There are five requirements for you to qualify for 0% interest loans. Those requirements being that it has to be nutrient-related, meaning nitrogen removal. You cannot be under an administrative order or consent decree, which you're not for that. It has to have an approved comprehensive wastewater management plan, the community does, which you have that. And it has to be in compliance with your regional water resource management plan, which the Cape Cod Commission reviewed and said you were in full compliance. So the fifth component is to have a land use control. As Jeff Colby indicated, it's a high-level management tool. The main reason for it and the purpose is so that the town has in place a regulation that manages to the projected flows that were presented in your comprehensive wastewater management plan. So in the document that was in your handout, dated May 2023 version, I will say all the staff that we're dealing with at the state on this issue are all brand-new on this issue as I'm sure the people at the State Office of Housing and Economic Development, since the administration has changed. However, we had presented them a version last fall of the five other land use controls that I had gotten approved for other communities. We finally got comments back from them. They've been going back and forth as to whether they needed to approve it first or you needed to approve it first. I'm here to tell you, as of this morning, they want you to approve it first and for us to send then a certified copy that the board took a vote to endorse this version. So what this version does is it breaks up the community, which is presented in the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, into what's known as four sewer service areas in the document referred to as SSAs. And the flows were updated from the Mass Estuaries Project Report. We're using the flows projected from 2012 to 2017 over that period, using the same methodology that they used in averaging. And then it, again, ensures that by those four different sewer service areas, being the Bass River watershed, the Lewis Bay watershed, the Parkers River watershed, and then you have an area, a new sewer service area that is what we refer to as direct discharge out into Nantucket Sound. So we just reference that as direct discharge. Those areas are shown on the figure that's attached to the land use controls. The flow within each of those watersheds is listed in the document in Table 1. The reason we changed a little bit and went to the watershed approach is, as you may know, you will need to sign a watershed permit with DEP at some point in the future, depending on when the watershed and Title V regulations become formalized. So you have one that you'll sign on your own for Parkers River. And then you'll jointly sign them with the Lewis Bay with Bonstable and Bass River with the town of Dennis. So we wanted to put the flow in terms of that watershed wastewater flow. And discussing with staff, at one time, we had it lined up with your construction phases. But your phases are going to change over time. We know they have to change depending on the new Title V regulations coming out and that requirement to reduce, in the earlier version anyway, 75% within a certain timeframe. that requirement to reduce, in the earlier version anyway, 75% within a certain timeframe, which you'll need to do in the Bass River, so some of that may move up. And just things in town will change over time. So we tried to get away from the construction phasing and listing flows by that, and we've done it now by the watersheds, which is, again, more global, higher-level flow management and will be easier for the town to track as well. So those, that in a nutshell is really the reason the documents were prepared. There was one other change. Originally, we had in there, and it might have been in the version you may have seen several months ago, that you could make some changes between sewer service areas on your own vote as sewer commissioners. If you wanted to add in an area or change flow from, to another sewer service area, it would require a town meeting vote and so forth. They, the state, the new staff, are only willing to let you change flows within a sewer service area, meaning from parcel to parcel, depending on the requirements that will be in your sewer use regs. If you change flow from one watershed to another, they want you to actually go into the state review process, DEV review process, and file what's known as a notice of project change. Should be a formality, but they want to make sure that there's enough public comment at the state level for any changes like that, since it's, it has been already approved and your comprehensive wastewater management plan went through that state level. So be happy to answer any questions. As Jeff indicated, they are looking for us to submit that, once the board chooses to take a vote and endorse this version or any changes that you would require to it. It's pretty straightforward, though.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, if we could just invite John Deliso-
Sure.
-to speak. John, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we gotta turn your, can you turn your volume up just a little bit? Your volume is muted a bit.
My volume is-
Unless, we'll, we'll try to do it on our end, but it would be helpful to get your, your take as, on the, from the Water Resources Advisory Committee. I was at your meeting. There was a fairly healthy discussion on this. Can you summarize?
Well, there, there are a couple of thoughts. First, the Water Resources Advisory Committee endorsed the proposed regulations unanimously. I would point out that the, the flows in the projection are highly likely to be very accurate based on the history of water consumption. The, you know, the determination of what the, the volumes are going to be throughout the system can be seen as, as, as likely to be higher, highly accurate because of the accurate history of various parcels, customers', water use. And secondly, I would point out, as Mr. Young has, that what's before you tonight is something that can and probably will be revisited at some point in the future. Whether that's five years or 10 years, who knows? But, you know, this is not something that will bind the town for evermore. Does that help?
Mr. Chairman, I had the benefit of attending the Water Resources Advisory Committee meeting, and it was a very healthy discussion. You know, when, when I saw this on the agenda and up for discussion, I thought it was gonna be pretty complicated, but it's pretty straightforward in terms of what's going on here. And obviously, this is critical for us in terms of getting financial assistance, so given the committee's endorsement, I'm, I'm satisfied that this should be taken up tonight and voted affirmatively, so I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion whenever the board's ready.
Dan.
So I'm, I'm curious, why was this component not included in the package that went up to Boston?
As I indicated, we've been going back and forth on, with the new staff, as to whether they were going to review it and then send us back comments and then get state approval, which is what's been done in previous communities I've dealt with. But the new staff has decided they want you to endorse it first and then submit it to them, and then they will pass it along to the State Housing and Economic Development Office.
So it's just confusion because it's new personnel trying to-
Yeah, they've had it since last fall.
And a new process. Okay.
So this reflects the revisions they have given us.
One thing I, I guess caught me a little off-guard is discharge directly into Nantucket Sound. I don't ever remember that being talked about before. How is that envisioned?
If you look at that last figure, the area shown in white down in the southern portion, it's just the way the watersheds are drawn, so that area, that groundwater just goes directly-
Automatically by itself.
Yes, it's not into Parkers River or Bass River.
So we're not doing any kind of outfall pipe or anything?
Yeah.
No.
There's no pipe or anything involved.
I was just like, oh, I don't remember that. Okay.
But there's also no sewer involved. I mean, that's the reality, is, is those are gonna still rely on, are they not, or no?
The residential areas don't, but down on South Shore Drive and Route 28, there are portions of that that have flow. So as you see in Table 1, there's 272,000 gallons projected to come from that area.
And there is the possibility that the community at some point in the future could decide to sewer that area, but it wouldn't be for nitrogen removal reasons. It could be the high groundwater, there could be other reasons.
Okay. Curious, you, you said that the flow should remain relatively stable, but with all of this soaring and the additional flow that you've built into the projections, you are anticipating some increased flow, right?
Yes, approximately 725,000 gallons a day, in addition to the existing flows that we've already documented, is built into this, and then it's divided up by watershed.
That's really not a lot, right?
It's not, but it is a number we'll have to manage too, and it'll be in that further detail within the sewer use regulations, as to how that's proportioned. It'll have to be managed, and that's the whole purpose behind the land use controls, is the state doesn't want to allow communities uncontrolled growth in the future. So we've picked numbers based upon specific calculations, working with the Community Development Department, as to what the right flows might be, and that's the number we've come up with.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And flows in actual residential home ownership have actually been decreasing over time, as more appliances, washing machines, and all those things become much more water-efficient.
Okay. Yeah, that's true.
I have no questions at this time.
Peter.
As Mark said, I thought this was gonna be real complicated, but it has been explained very well, and I, therefore, I have no, no additional questions.
You had mentioned that if, if there was a change between one of these watersheds and another, it would be subject to state review process. How big a deal would that be in that process? How involved would that be?
You would need to now file what's known as a notice of project change, but that would be simply a letter or it would probably be in the form of a amendment to your comprehensive wastewater management plan, stating the reasons why the town wanted to move that flow from one sewer service area to another.
And if there was-
And how the nitrogen would be removed by adding that additional flow into that watershed.
And if there was a legitimate reason for it, would they be pretty receptive to that change?
Oh, absolutely.
They would? Okay. All right, Mark, you said you had a motion when we were done with our discussion?
Yeah, I moved to, I moved to approve the, the wastewater land use control regulations as presented.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, which I understand gets certified by the town clerk. Bob, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Peter.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Dorcas.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. So that's a five to zero vote in favor, and we'll get the town clerk to get that vote certified right away.
Great.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it. We have any boarding committee action stuff? Oh, no, we have a gender review. No, we have a gender review first, don't we? Yes.
There's no, no-
Do you have any board committee?
Not today, no.
Okay.
Next week.
There's two items on here that I was gonna include on my town administrator report, but I, I think it's better discussed on, on the agenda of some items that we want to add in the next town meeting. One of them is that we're, we're gonna have, on the Community and Economic Development Committee amendments to the legislation that, that were made, that requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen on the final form of the bill, which we, we now have from Representative Flanagan. So this was previously approved, then approved at town meeting, then it went to the legislature. Now they've got it printed in a bill format with the legislators signing on it. So one of the things that the House Counsel indicated is they would like a certified copy of a vote of the Board of Selectmen, so we want to place it on the agenda and, and have that vote. We'll do that at the next meeting. And there's another item that hadn't appeared in the previous projected agenda items, but it's coming up now, and we're gonna get a couple of bites at the apple. Everyone has seen the information that's come across your emails. The town has a Chapter 40B housing application, and it is at the location of the, the former dry cleaner, or not dry cleaner, it's a-
Laundromat.
Laundromat, excuse me, out, out on Route 28, and it is for 23 units, six of which would be affordable, and it is the, the type of 40B affordable housing application that goes directly to the state. It's not the one that's done together with the local government. And, and the way that process works is they apply to the state to get a determination of eligibility to do a 40B. And through that process, the town has the ability to make comments. And so, since we received the application, we've involved every applicable boarding committee, whether it be the planning board, the zoning board, the housing trust, the housing committee, and we've had site plan review, all of the boards and committees, and we're gonna have a presentation in front of the Board of Selectmen next week on what the development is. And the process moving forward is that we'd like to bring it back on, after hearing it on July 11, together with recommended comments from all of the boards and committees, and we'd like to consolidate the town's comments. And so everyone's been working on it, and we want to have the comments go in under the Board of Selectmen, but that's just a little bit about the 40B process, and it's at the very beginning stages. So this is, the town gets the first look at it, everyone gets to make the general comments on the proposal, and then if they get the letter from the state that gives them the permission to make the actual application, then that application is filed and the review authority is the zoning board of appeals for those. So, but, but it is an important opportunity to comment, so what we're trying to do is, is get as detailed a comment process as possible.
That item's gonna be moved to 7/11 to 27th?
No, we're gonna get a first bite at the apple to learn about the project on the 27th, and then we're gonna-
Oh, okay, so 7/11 is the second.
No, 11th to make the comments, yes, so.
Can you invite in some of the butters as well, if they have any concerns? Yeah, we sure can. That was a laundromat. Is there any kind of contamination issues underneath there?
We, we do not believe so. I've not seen a 21E report, but as, as you corrected me, remember now, it, it wasn't a dry cleaner, which would be associated with the use of the heavy chemicals, the, you know, PCBs and things of that nature, just a laundromat. So we don't believe that there's contamination on that site, but that's gonna have to be reviewed.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, a suggestion also for the 27th, although-
What's that?
Well, first of all, I want to disclose that I may have difficulty making this meeting, but I do think that the board should at least be briefed on the DEP regulations. The word is that they're gonna be coming out soon, and I would anticipate that the board's gonna want the, an assessment from DPW and the town administrator on what those regulations look like, and so I-
My understanding is that they were gonna be finalized in the fall. I could be wrong about that.
I, I can just sort of assure you on fairly, fairly reliable sources that we, we will be knowing, we will know what's going on very soon. And let me just sort of leave it at that. Yeah, well, we should know very soon. We should know before the meeting. And I think the board may benefit from having some initial assessment in terms of how that fits, so.
Okay, so on the next one, we got the scholarship presentation, which is always a nice thing. We had change of manager, water rates. Second hearing, I guess, and then a briefing of the 40B that Bob just mentioned. What's this discussion vote on municipality vulnerability preparedness?
We've had a, a committee working with a grant on an update of the municipal vulnerability preparedness plan, how the town deals with the vulnerability to coastal erosion, sea level rise. So we have a, a team from the Woods Hole Group and the town engineering staff to brief the board on the threats from sea level rise and climate change.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would very much like to participate in that discussion, and since it's likely that I might not be able to make the meeting, is it possible, or would anybody have an issue if we put that off to the following meeting?
Yeah. I don't have a problem with it if, if it's okay with everybody else.
Especially if we're gonna be putting the DEP update in there.
So, okay, we'll move that one to 7/11, right?
Mm-hmm.
And Mark?
Thank you.
And then Matickees Middle School Reuse Committee draft charge. We don't necessarily have to vote on that. We can have a presentation and hold the vote.
Right, but then there could be some comments, and I'd be happy to share my comments in writing.
Administrator's evaluation we can do, unless you wanna-
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine. I've turned in my report card.
Okay, no, I've got that. Then on the 11th-
But if you hold on the 27th for a second, aren't you saying, Mark, that we should have that update on the DEP?
Yeah, what I would recommend, and this, and this could be done in the town administrator's report, but I think everybody just needs to be aware that something should be, could very well be happening before that. And I think as board members, you're gonna want to at least have a, have an update, so I'd stick it on the-
I just assume leave it as a town administrator item, and then depending on the information that comes in.
Yeah, but I think you should go into the meeting looking for some, as, as, as news unfolds, you're gonna want to have the administrator and DPW take on what it all means.
Anybody have anything else on any of the areas there?
The only thing I don't see in here is what we asked for was a water review, a PFAS review, a, just to make sure, drought review. Fortunately, we had some rain this week, but just want, I'd just like to stay on top of it, 'cause it kinda snuck up on us last year.
So which review did you, did you want two? PFAS and drought, or just drought?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we had- Yeah, I mean, we have, we had that new plant, that new plant is being built, should be online shortly, I hope, and then there was talk about some other wells that may be endangered at this point.
You just want a general water...
Yeah, just to see where we're at.
Update on water issues. So when are we looking to do that?
Unless it becomes critical, maybe you can do it on the 18th.
When?
Maybe you want to move it to the July 18th.
July 18th?
If it becomes critical, hopefully somebody can bring it forward before that.
Yeah, okay, so water review output.
I just don't want to get caught flat-footed like we did last year.
Well, actually, I thought, I thought last year we were able to get ahead of it.
But it came like...
Well, remember, we, as a board, took actions and took some steps, and then I think because we had done that, we were prepared to deal with the drought when it came up. So I thought that was one of the instances where we were kind of thinking ahead of the game.
So what did you want, a report on drought, PFAS, what else?
No, that's...
Those two items in particular? So, okay, they're tentative on the 18th. Anyone else, Dorcas? Peter, do you have anything for agenda review items you'd want to have considered?
Couple of things. I had, I had water review, both PFAS and drought, to make sure we're on top of this so it doesn't catch up, catch up to us. And also, I met with CEDC, and they would like to, they'd like to come in front of the board three, you know, three or four times a year, and probably come in front of the board with two or three or four potentialities, which is going to be more on business development than, than just running events, and, you know, get, get some endorsement from the selectmen on some potentialities. They also, also discussed the fact that it's a desperate need to replace Kyle. Kyle was a very important person to the community and economic development, and it would be really good if, if we could, we could get a replacement for Kyle if there's room in the budget. And lastly, the thought would be maybe we should hire a grant writer, and a grant writer can pay for themselves, given that, given grants that they successfully bring to the town. Those are, those are my items.
Do we have the ones for the 11th? Don't we have them?
CEDC is on for the 11th, Peter.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, we can talk about these things, I think, at that time.
Yep.
Okay, can we move on from now?
Yes.
Let's go to individual items. Mark.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Dorcas.
No, thank you.
Peter.
Nothing on my end.
Okay, I'll pass for now, and we'll go to town administrator items. There's no consent agenda.
Yes, we do have a consent agenda.
What do we have?
And the DNR is requesting approval of the amendment to the shellfish regulations that are included in there, and we also have the approval of a draft memo of support from the Board of Selectmen for the Cape Cod Commission DRI exemption request for the Riverwalk Park project, and Kathy Williams has drafted a very nice memo in there to support that, and so I'd like to send that to the commission. And we have a donation to the Recreation Department from the Friday Club of Yarmouth for $1,000.
I move the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
A roll call vote. Dorcas.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, passes by unanimous vote. And now I guess we come to town administrator updates.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the affordable housing 40B update. I'm glad we were able to talk about that under the agenda review, and also the CEDC vote that we'll be placing on the agenda. And I do, I know it has been mentioned earlier, but I do want to encourage everyone to join the Board of Selectmen on this Saturday, June 24, my anniversary, at the Splash Pad opening at 9:00 a.m. over at Sandy Pond Park, and I think that that'll be a great event, and...
This is the event that you're bringing, you're coming in your bathing suit?
In my bathing suit, ready to be the first person to jump through it. I'm told it's low impact in terms of, you know, what it takes, it's accessible, so I thought I may be safe.
No, we have one of those dump dunking type tanks, and we just throw the ball at you.
And I've actually been in one of those before. I hope never to, again, you see that. They all cheated. The children throw the ball, and then they miss, and then they run up and hit it, so you never win in that game, and...
That's funny.
You know, there's another item that I don't want to have any vote on, but I do want to put it on for an upcoming agenda, maybe even next week, and it's just about a fall town meeting, and I think we've got a few things, you know, the ADU is moving, so I'm...
You got a couple of dates you wanted to throw out.
Yeah, and, and I sat, I met with the town moderator, I met with the town clerk, and we threw around some dates, and two dates that we're considering potentially is October 24 or November 7. And November 7 is very intriguing because it's normally election day, but there's no state election this year, so it's, it's a free day, and it may be a great, instead of having an election, have a town meeting, it's sort of an official day, but I thought I could look at the run-up for those and, and not request any snap decision, but maybe you could think in terms of what your preferences may be.
I discussed this briefly with Bob today. My calendar would be more amenable to the November date.
I'm there, too.
Mine would, too.
What I'll prepare is, you know how I do that whole town meeting calendar, all of the run-up things we need to do? I'll have you look at it and see if it makes sense.
Like it's one day off or something.
That'd be great.
That's all I had for tonight.
Peter, how's your, do you have any preference on those dates, or you want to get back to us, or...
No, all those, all those dates would work. My only issue is, the issue that you, that you know about, if I have chemo, that particular day of a meeting, I cannot attend.
Do we want to, do we want to settle on that November date? Do we want to agree on it tonight, or do you want to defer on it? What do you want to do?
Tonight.
How about you, Dorcas?
I'm fine.
How about you?
I'm fine, I'm fine with that date.
We don't need a vote, do we?
No.
We just have a consensus that that's the date, we're going to have it.
And I'll prepare the whole calendar that...
November 7th? Okay, good, that's great. Thank you. Anything else on town administrator updates?
No, that's it for me.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to adjourn.
Wait a second.
I'm saying that.
Okay, roll call vote. Peter, have you had enough?
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Dan. Dorcas.
Aye.
I have a vote aye as well. Now, there's stuff to be signed before you leave in that red folder, so let's...